Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, welcome everybody today to the City Council's Special Study Session. And today's date is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. I now call the meeting to order. So I'd like everybody to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please do the voice roll call for this study session?
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Camaros?
Here.
Councilmember Harlan?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temmar? I don't believe she's... Oh, there she is. She's connecting. Mayor Stevens?
I'm here.
And Mayor Pro Temmar, we see you're here. Thank you.
Got it. Good stuff. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So we have one study session item. We're going to be talking about our budget, but in particular, the capital improvement project portion of our budget. And so, everybody will get a chance to ask their questions. We'll hear from the public. But the first thing we want to do is call on staff to do a presentation so we'll be in a better position to ask questions. So, right now, without further ado, I'll give the floor to our city manager, Lori Ann Farrell Harrison, who's got some opening remarks. And then we'll hear from Rajah Setharaman.
Just one moment, please, Mr. Mayor. I just want to read the title into the record.
Sure, of course.
This is the fiscal year 2021-2022 Proposed Capital Improvement Program Budget and Five-Year CIP Study Session. Thank you.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Good evening, council members. Very happy to be with you this evening to talk about the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. So this is a very exciting night for us. We've been meeting for months on next year's proposed budget, and we have a great presentation for you tonight, specifically related to the capital improvement program budget that we'd like to recommend for the fiscal year beginning July 1. And so, just a couple of things before we start the presentation. I just wanted to remind everybody that our fiscal year is a July-through-June fiscal year. And so, the budget that we'll be talking about tonight is the budget for the fiscal year starting July 1. This is one of many study sessions that we'll have related to next year's budget. We are starting with the capital improvement program budget for you, and then the operating budget will follow, again, for the fiscal year starting July 1. And so, tonight, you're going to hear from our Public Services Department, but you're also going to hear from the departments that work closely with public services to put forward their requests. And so, just a brief background on the process here at the city. The process begins very early on, in the beginning of the calendar year, to assemble the information from departments on their budget asks and needs. And again, it is across all departments. And so, we hear from our fire department and their facility needs. We hear from police and every single member of the team on the needs that we have in terms of capital projects. You'll see tonight that the projects span many different areas, some that affect the community and that people will be able to see as they recreate about the city, and then some that are related specifically to city facilities. But it's a robust program with many different moving parts and different funding streams. And so, tonight, we'll go into detail on some of those. Again, no action needs to be taken tonight. This is an educational session where we recommend to you projects for next year. And then, hopefully, we'll get some great feedback from you on whether we're consistent with your priorities and how you'd like to move forward. But before I did that, I did want to thank Public Services Department in particular because it's a huge undertaking every year to put the CIP together. The operating budget is a one-year budget, but the CIP is a multi-year forward-looking plan that's typically accomplished over many years. And you can be working on several years CIP programs at the same time. And so, with that, I'm going to ask Rajah to start the presentation. I'm going to give a couple more additional remarks on background, and I'm going to turn it over to staff to get into the details with you tonight. And so, just to provide a brief overview, the difference between the CIP program and then our operating budget is pretty significant. So I wanted to start there just with a bit of an acculturation as to the proposed budget for a fiscal year and how it has these two distinct components. The operating budget is specifically for that one year. The CIP is a five-year plan. And you'll see programs that we're recommending and projects that we're recommending for next year, but those projects will not get completed in one year. And so, I wanted to start with that just to make sure that we're all on the same page about the expectations of how a CIP works. There are some projects that can be done in a matter of sometimes days or weeks. And then, there are some projects that are multi-year projects. And so, what the CIP typically provides for you as our council members going into the next year's budget cycle is an identification of priorities and projects that we need to start working on that are consistent with the goals and the accomplishments that we've had in the past, but the goals that you have for us in the future. And so, it is a multifaceted program that spans many different years. In fact, the accounting is even different for the capital budget than it is for the accounting of the operating side of the budget because inherently, it's recognized that in governmental budgeting, the CIP is a multi-year program and a multi-year process. Did want to mention that every CIP project goes through distinct phases, and that can happen over multiple years, from the project identification to the design phase. I wanted to mention the bidding phase for the newer council members because that's a very important part of a CIP. By law, by state law, we have to bid our projects over a certain amount publicly, in an open, transparent, and fair way, with sealed bids being provided, specific dates and times, and then subject to review, and then, of course, contract award and selection. And so, just wanted to stress that that in of itself creates inherent timelines that need to be followed, but a lengthy, open, transparent process. The CIP budget is also different from the operating budget that you'll see many more diverse funding sources, many of them restricted for specific types of capital projects. But it is the part of the budget that is most robust in terms of different types of funding. And so, you'll find federal funding, state, county, local funds, all combined together to comprise the CIP. Again, some of them may have specific restrictions and requirements, but the important thing to keep in mind there is because of the fact that we have federal, state, county, and local funds, there's an enormous amount of coordination and oversight for some of the especially larger projects. And so, we'll have interplay, communication, coordination on the front end throughout and on the back end for many of our projects at the federal level, at the state level, in some cases, at the county level, very specific record retention requirements and schedules that need to be adhered to, reporting requirements. And so, I mentioned all of this just to stress that inherently, it is very different from the operating budget. It is far more complicated, subject to very specific audits and many different levels of governmental accountability, and it's open and transparent. And in many ways, our operating budget is open and transparent, but nowhere in the budget is there more complexity in terms of managing different funds, ensuring that we can pass audit from every single grand tour and every granting agency with the CIP than in the CIP. And so, just wanted to set that context. The definition for a CIP project is anything that's over $30,000. Oftentimes, we'll get asked about a specific project. It's $10,000. It doesn't meet the threshold for a CIP. And so, just wanted to make sure that we share this information with you that we have a common set of facts and background about the complexity, all of the different elements of the CIP that make it such a unique opportunity for cities to build out their infrastructure, but also why it's pretty extensive and complicated and why it's a multi-year process. And so, with that background, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Public Services. And so, Rajah, now it's you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell Harrison. I think there is some technical issues. They're saying I should change the view. Let me share it again.
It's fine. We just weren't seeing presentation mode, but we could see it.
There was a message from downstairs. Can you see this right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, Rajah. It's just we could see the slides on the side, but it's all good. And then Lori Ann had a little issue with her audio, but I think you should be okay.
Thank you. So, as Ms. Farrell Harrison mentioned, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for this time, for the presentation. So, the CIP is financed from multiple sources. And in the last year CIP, we had, you know, the global pandemic brought in a lot of challenges. And the actions taken by City Council to stem those challenges have helped greatly. So, we made significant adjustments to the CIP budget and also the process. Some of the process adjustments, let me talk about that briefly, is we had to adjust how we open bids, for example. Everything has to be online, you know, open bids online. The meetings have to be conducted online via Zoom. And also, the many coordination issues were a challenge. There were supply issues, supply issues with various projects. Having, despite all these challenges, we were able to deliver a lot of projects in the last fiscal year or in this current fiscal year. And one more thing, as budget, the council waived the 5% capital asset needs ordinance requirement, which means we did not budget the full 5% of general fund revenues for CIP last year. Or sorry, when I say last year, it's actually this current fiscal year. So, some of the accomplishments are Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter. This project was completed and dedicated on March 23rd. Many of you were at the dedication. So, this one, we built in about six-month timeframe, and it's built at a 72% capacity. We took pretty much an empty warehouse and transformed that into a living space for 72 persons. And it has a full commercial kitchen, indoor and outdoor gathering areas, gender-separated living quarters. And the funding was from CDVG, over $1.9 million. And we have county HAB grant of $2.5 million. Initially, when we started the budget process last year, we did not have the HAB grant. We put that under JAL Fund, but it got replaced by the county grant. Norma Hatza Community Center. We are waiting for this to be formally dedicated and open. This was completed and built to... It was actually designed to lead silver, but we think we are going to get a lead gold on this one. We are waiting confirmation on that one. It's a beautiful facility. We can't wait for everyone to come visit this one. It has a large meeting event hall with a 330% capacity and a smaller conference room with a 100% capacity. And we also have an outdoor area for extending the party outside. And we have, there are new audio/video capabilities, modernized equipment throughout. Lions Park Playground. We are excited about this project. It's coming to completion. As you can see, a lot of the play elements are already there. The planes refurbished. It needs painting. It's all patched up, and it looks very, very good at this point. We are waiting for a new shade structure to be built. New restrooms are already built here, and the project is expected to be completed by late June of this year. So, we are happy to open this up soon. Mary McWay Improvements. This project is right now underway, but about 70%, 75% completed. Medians have been reconstructed. A lot of planting is done. We are waiting to do final reconstruction of the street itself because the street, as you can see in some of these pictures, the street is in a very poor shape. So, the street is going to be completely redone, and then we'll have new Class 4 bike facility on this one, which is separated by lanes. And also, we have a Class 1 bike facility for a portion of the street. So, this is actually, if you look at the network of this bike facilities, we recently completed Arlington Drive, and now you have this completed. And previously, we finished Harbor Cornerstone Bike Trail. So, you're seeing a network of actually bike trails that are connecting the east-west portions of the city. Thank you, Mr. ... Yeah. Mr. City Engineer Sung Yang can talk about this one?
Thank you, Mr. Setharaman. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. I'm Sung Yang, City Engineer. During this fiscal year, despite all the challenges just mentioned, the Public Service Department delivers significant street improvements. For example, going clockwise on this slide, our department rehabilitated Hamilton Street, Santa Ana Avenue, and Bear Street. Major portions of the active transportation plan, ETP, were incorporated, such as expanded bike lanes along Santa Ana Avenue, conflict zones striking along Hamilton Street, and Bear Street bike boxes and bike lanes. Not only these streets, but also the Public Services Department rehabilitated close to 1.1 million square feet of pavement during this fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Setharaman.
Thank you, Mr. Yang. So, this brings us to the 21-22 CIP budget. So, as I mentioned, prior City Council actions to act on the pandemic impacts significantly improved our outlook for the upcoming fiscal year. So, the proposed CIP now, we expect to meet the 5% allocation for the CAN ordinance. And we think, based on the general fund revenues of... Expected revenues of $140 million translates to about $7 million. And many projects that previously deferred are now part of the new CIP. So, as I mentioned before, the CIP has many different funding sources, and here are the list of all of them and the proposed funding allocations for each of these. As you can see, the General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, has the highest contribution at $7 million. The next is gas tax. There are two sources of gas tax. And then, Measure M2, fare share. And then, we have traffic impact fees and park fees and other fees. So, all of these are... Some of these are restricted so they can be applied only for certain types of projects. And, for example, gas tax can be used only on public right-of-way projects, so streets and pathways. So, when you see how we allocate it, we can keep those in mind on how we are pushing these funds to different projects. So, we group our projects in six different areas. And as you can see in here, now streets get the majority of the funding. This is again proposed. So, almost $2.5 million goes towards street projects. The next highest one is actually the facilities at $4.5 million and then towards transportation at $4.2. So, parks as $2 million. And pathways and medians have $1 million, and energy sustainability has $2.95. So, in total, there are 47 projects that are recommended. And as Ms. Farrell Harrison mentioned, we developed these based on input from the City Council. When we listen to your priorities and different meetings over time, we identify what's priority for City Council, the community feedback that we get throughout the year. So, we hear about streets that are bad or, you know, different requests from the community. So, we take them into account. Commissions and committees. For example, we went to the Bikeway and Walkability Committee early this year to get a list of projects that they would like to see in the CIP so that that becomes part of the CIP. Various city departments submit their request. So, in total, the CIP is $24.6 million. And this is 10.7 million more than the last fiscal year. And as I mentioned before, $7 million of this is from general fund, and that's $4.7 million more compared to last year. The next... This is hard to see, but this is your attachment one. So, this is the 47 different projects that are part of this proposed CIP. And I'll go through just a handful of them, and I'll have help from our fellow directors and managers on this presentation. So, an important project is Fire Station 2. So, Chief Stefano can chime in on this one?
Well, thanks, Rajah. I... Mayor Stevens, members of the council, Lori Ann. For starters, I want to say what an outstanding job Rajah and his team have done, and it's a big lift in what they've done. But as far as Fire Station 2, we brought this to the council a couple of years ago with the intent to start moving down this path. And obviously, the destination changed a little bit, but we're appreciative to be back. The structure that you see before you, we're talking about a 55-year-old structure, very much outdated. We have done a number of things throughout the years to just keep it moving along. The discussion of possibly just doing a remodel. Really, there's not a remodel option in this. Based on how the structure is laid out, it truly needs to be a complete scrape and rebuild for a number of reasons, as it pertains to the facility itself, the systems in the facility, the ADA issues. We had an issue before with a significant health-related issue. And then, we get into different things as we talk about trying to be very proactive in cancer prevention. And so, a lot of different areas in this structure. And again, while 55 years ago, sound structure, it just does not meet the needs. It's one of our active stations. It's got incredible access to all of the freeways and the arteries. So, this is one that has serious needs. And we appreciate the consideration. The question has also come up because when this has been brought up before, and I just plant the seed, Station 4 was also topic of discussion. And just in perspective, while this was built in 1966, Station 4 and the training facility was 1967. So, we had both of them moving along. I believe at the time, the mayor was Willard Jordan. We're going back a little bit for that. But with that, we talk about 55 or 56-year-old structure and the use of it as a fire station. A lot of wear and tear, and while our folks have taken great care of it over the years, truly has exceeded its lifespan. And so, the ask, obviously, is looking for the long-term vision of something the community will have for 50 years ahead, including all of the environmental needs that we would address and have addressed in previous structures. So, with that, Rajah, I'll yield it back to you and add anything, but I will say we're extremely excited about this, especially having discussed it with some members of the council from a couple of years ago, and appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Chief Stefano. So, the design of this is budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year proposed. The construction estimate of this is in the $7.5 million range. So, that will be something that we'll discuss in future budget study sessions down the road. That would be a topic of discussion. But at this point, the funding request is for design fees. Another important project is the shooting range remodel. And if Chief Glass can chime in on this one?
Thank you, Rajah. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, many of you are familiar with this project. It's been discussed for the last couple of fiscal years. Last year, this current fiscal year was focused on design, and we've had lots of meetings working with Public Services. You know, again, our facility, 1967, there was a remodel in 2008. However, the range was left untouched during that remodel. So, this goes back. Some minor fixes have been done to baffling and different aspects of it. However, it's inadequate to keep up with our required training. For us, a department now that we're 138, thank you, and with our three reserves, you know, we have firearms, not just firearms, less lethal equipment and de-escalation training. All those are conducted in this room. And it's a perishable skill that we're continuously working on. And having our own facility, which we do, has always been a benefit to the organization. You know, we have bi-monthly handgun qualification, annual 12, or annual shotgun, as well as SIMs, less lethal qualifications, quarterly patrol rifle qualification and zeroing. We do a lot of our scenarios, interactions in here where officers will be confronted with the opportunity to potentially use lethal force or de-escalation and different things. So, a lot of those things that happen in this room, and we are able to do it from our facility, from having to not to drive to Westminster or the Sheriff's Department and use theirs and take people out of the field. People could be here during their shifts. They come in, get qualified, meet those perishable skills and post requirements. And it's always been a benefit to our organization since I've been here and even before. Just now, we've had a lot of issues with some of the baffling electrics, sewage. So, over the last couple of years, we've been discussing redesigning this for the storage in the office area, as well as addressing lanes. As you can see, these lanes, this is a picture, it's pretty current. We have some makeshift targets down there that we can remotely, but they're not part of the actual framing no more that we need to replace and have a more current system over the years.
I forget precisely where we left off, but it appears we were talking about the shooting range. So, who wants to pick that up? Did Keith Glass, did you finish?
Yeah, I was closing my in and heading over to Rajah.
Okay, good stuff. So, now, we're going back to Mr. Setharaman.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council and members of the community, we apologize for the disruption that's caused with the power outage. So, we are back discussing the CIP. So, the PD shooting range remodel, as Chief Glass mentioned, the funding is requested for construction, and the estimated cost is $1.5 million. So, moving on. Our next project is West Side Park Development. This is a new initiative to... Multi-year initiative, actually, to look at how we can add to open space and park space in the West Side area. The city as a whole is deficient in parks, but West Side in particular is deficient in park space. And we want to identify opportunities for acquiring new land, leasing, repurposing, or even private partnership. You recently heard about soccer mini pitches. So, explore different options, work with school district where we can, however we can do to expand open space in the West Side. So, this is an initial investment, but as you can imagine, this will be a multi-year effort to work on getting more open space in the West Side. The next is on energy and sustainability. Not sure if our energy sustainability manager is online. Ms. Fawcett, if not, I can continue. I'm not hearing so. So, we want to continue the energy and sustainability efforts that we made, you know, continue into 21-22. You heard our presentation a couple of months ago, actually, last month, about our annual report for energy sustainability, and we had tremendous achievements. And we want to continue on that work. The next fiscal year, we want to explore community choice energy for Costa Mesa. We want to do a feasibility study, conduct community outreach. So we get feedback from the community on on community choice energy. And then we want to identify other partner agencies that we can we can go with in this in this venture. Uh, we added electric vehicle charging stations at the city hall, and now we want to add them at senior center and corporation yard. Recently, you know, we acquired a new bus for the senior center. So this will be a great place to to charge up that bus if we have a charging station in the senior center. Uh, we want to green up the city fleet for further work on that effort. We acquired three Chevy Bolts recently, and we want to add add to that in the next fiscal year. And our sustainable elements actually show up on all the projects. The power outage, for example, like we have today, and we want to improve reliability for power. So so those are the different projects that will be working in the next next year and then even starting tomorrow. And the operating budget for next year includes community outreach for the new Senate Bill thirteen eighty three mandate, which requires organics based reduction. So so that's something that we'll be working on in the next year. Citywide street improvements. Not sure if Mr. Yang is online.
I'm here, Mr. Seth Araman. Yes, thank you, sir. The Public Service Department is proud to report that our city has maintained a high level with respect to our pavement conditions. Our city currently maintains a pavement condition index, or P C I, of eighty six point three out of a hundred, which is only second to the city of Irvine for cities in Orange County with a population over a hundred thousand. For street improvements, our total allocation for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two is approximately eleven million dollars with funding from gas tax, R M R A, which is road maintenance and rehabilitation account, Measure M two, C D B T, which is community development block grant, and capital improvement funds, which is the general fund. A step away from some of the streets to be improved in the upcoming fiscal year is going clockwise on this slide, Wilson Street, Adams Avenue, Sunflower Avenue, and West Seventeenth Street. As we have done in the past, active transportation issues will be incorporated with consultation from the Bike Way and Walkability Committee, and also from the general public. Thank you very much, Mr. Seth Araman.
So, Mr. Yang, thank you. And and also as part of this effort, we'll be again improving many residential streets in the city. So so that's also part of this project. So the next one is on traffic signal synchronization. And Ms. Rosales?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seth Araman, Mayor Stevens, and members of the city council. The first project that I'll be discussing is a traffic signal synchronization project on Baker Street, La Cencha Avenue, Nineteenth Street, and Victoria Street. We secured an O C T A grant in the amount of one point eight million dollars for this project. This project includes bicycle video detection, pedestrian countdown heads, and audible pedestrian push buttons. In addition, the timing changes will include longer pedestrian crossing times and also bicycle timing at the intersections. The project includes new traffic signal equipment at forty one of the intersections on these corridors. And this project improves air quality and reduces greenhouse gas emissions by minimizing stops and delays. So the next project is I'm talking about active transportation projects. In the proposed budget, we have over two million dollars in active transportation projects, which I am happy to report that this is the most ever proposed for active transportation projects in the city's C I P budget. While the two million, while those two million proposed projects specific to A T P projects, we also look to incorporate improvements to bicycle and pedestrian facilities in our street projects as well. So the funding for the active transportation projects of the two million, over over two million, is from traffic impact fees, the capital improvement fund, and the Measure M two fair share front fund. In addition, I'd like to point out that the proposed F Y twenty one, twenty two operating budget also includes a proposed new active transportation coordinator position. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right. So this slide shows a list of the proposed active transportation projects, which includes bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements citywide. This is to implement the Active Transportation Plan, which includes our bicycle master plan and the pedestrian master plan, which is currently underway. It also includes a citywide bicycle wayfinding signage, which will identify and design a wayfinding signage for for bicycles citywide. It also includes implementation as well. The third project, Class Two, Class Three, and Class Four bicycle projects. First of all, I'll just define what Class Two means. Class Two is bicycle lanes and buffered bike lanes. Class Three would be a bicycle route or bike boulevard. And then Class Four would be a cycle track, which is what we what Mr. Seth Ram had talked about earlier with the Merrimack Way project. The projects in this category will include Fairview. Is the Mesa Del Mar multimodal access improvements. And this is multimodal access and circulation improvements, including bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the Mesa Del Mar area. The project includes both conceptual design, engineering design for short and long term improvements, and an extensive public outreach component. The next project on the list is the Mesa del Drive and Santa Ana Bicycle Facility Improvements Project. This project would design a Class One on the north side of Mesa Drive and either a Class Two or a Class Four bicycle facility on the west side of Santa Ana Avenue adjacent to the golf course. The next project is the Mesa Verde Drive East and Peterson Place Class Two Bicycle Facility. This project would study a potential downgrade to the existing classification on Mesa Verde Drive, which would include traffic analysis, looking at a concept and analysis for a lane reduction, Class Two bicycle lanes, which could be a Class Two buffered bike lanes, since there is quite a bit of space if a road, a lane reduction was implemented, extensive public outreach, and final design. The next project is the Randolph Avenue Parking and Pedestrian Improvements. This project would construct new signings, striping, and traffic calming improvements on Randolph and St. Clair. It includes roundabout at Randolph and St. Clair, also includes speed cushions and a mid-blocked mid-block raised crosswalk on Randolph with a retro reflective flashing, proposed retro reflective flashing pedestrian beacon as well. And the last project I'd like to just briefly discuss is the West Eighteenth and Wilson Street Crosswalks Project. This would include high visibility pedestrian crossings with a controlled crossing with pedestrian hybrid hybrid beacons, similar to the pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is also called the Hawk Signal that you see on Arlington Avenue. And the last thing I wanted to point out is all of these projects have elements as identified in the in N A T O, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. So they all have elements of active transportation as identified by N A T O. With that, I'll go ahead and hand it back to Mr. Seth Araman.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. So that that concludes our list of projects that we want to talk about, highlight. And then the five year C I P is that's that's also included in your in your study session report and its attachment two. So the five year plan includes projects that are deferred in previous years, and those that are proposed in the upcoming fiscal years. So it's it's a plan for for the future. And and this plan will be updated based on any revised goals and priorities by city council, any input from commissions and committees and community, and also based on any on our industry best practices. Just want to point out that the projects that are listed in the year two to year five of and the future of this five year plan, we are not identifying any funding for that at this time. They are just listed there for information purpose and for planning purposes. And when we apply for grants, that's something that we refer to to see which projects we want to go for in the next grant application. As you can imagine, we, as as we mentioned earlier, the C I P is a multi-year endeavor. So we have several projects that are still ongoing, and they will be ongoing in the next fiscal year. From previous fiscal years, they'll be continuing on. Some of the major ones are listed in this, but in this slide. But a full list of projects are in attachment three. So some of the examples, some of the big projects are, we're doing a citywide parking study, pedestrian master plan, improvements on Fairview Road between Adams and Baker, that will be underway soon. The design of Adams Avenue improvements, which is still underway, which will continue the next fiscal year. West Side Restoration Project, looking at improvements on West Nineteenth Street. Shalimar Park Improvements, Newport Boulevard, that's another project that was approved for design by 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 you, the city council, recently. So we'll be working on the design. Fairview Park Master Plan, it's an ongoing project. Custom is a skate park. We will be conducting some community outreach on that project. The city hall elevators, the construction will start in June on that. And Jack Hammett Sports Complex, again, that's that project also will be underway shortly in terms of construction. The the C I P, proposed C I P was presented to Planning Commission yesterday to get their general plan conformance approval, and and we received approval of general plan conformity of the proposed C I P. We are here today for the council study session. We'll be at the Finance and Pension Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow to present the same thing. And finally, we'll be going to Park Arts and Cultural Services Committee on May twenty seventh. Finally, if Ms. Molina can chime in on the budget calendar.
Thank you, Rajah. So for the preliminary dates for the twenty one, twenty two proposed budget, before you tonight is a study session to review the twenty one, twenty two capital improvement projects as outlined by Mr. Seth Araman and his staff. On May twenty fifth is when we are going to be anticipating coming to a study session to the city council to provide the preliminary operating budget for next year. On June first, we anticipate setting the public hearing for the preliminary operating and C I P budget as the first open session for the city council to consider the and discuss the budget. We're also providing an alternate date for a study session if needed to continue discussion on the twenty one, twenty two preliminary operating budget. And if also needed, June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two operating and C I P budget. That is the next few dates that we have scheduled to come before the city council for deliberation and approval of the budget for the next year.
With that, Mr. Mayor and city council, that that's our last slide. Again, thank you for your patience and thank you, and and we apologize to you and the community for the power outage we had.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. So now we're going to, what we're going to do is open it up for public comment, and then we'll have the council can ask all their questions. So it is, if anybody would like to speak from the public on this, raise your hand on your raise your hand feature or press star nine. And you can only talk about what is on our agenda, which is the capital improvement program presentation, and you'll have two minutes. And Madam Clerk, if people get to thirty seconds, give them a thirty second warning, please. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak from the public on this item?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Our first speaker is Kim Hendricks.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I hope you received my email that I sent to you today. And I want to go right to the ongoing capital improvement projects, the Vernal Pool Restoration. That, I want to refer you to the meeting date of October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And the city has to received a grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they had to match it. And then they hired Glenn Lucas, which is great. So I see that it's actually two hundred and ten thousand dollars, the remaining balance. But I don't see that for the next, I don't see that in any of the projects for the next year or up till twenty twenty six. And the contract is up in October twenty twenty five. And I think it's very important that we restore the habitats in Fairview Park before we start putting signage up. So project number sixty three on that same page for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm questioning why that would happen. I think that master plan is a great idea. I don't think it should be an ongoing project anymore. It's time to get that completed because really, we can't move forward in any smart manner unless we have an overall plan. October twenty eighteen, Cynthia DiAgosta had a bunch of experts in the city council chambers, and they all agreed. And you would too, if you were going to remodel your house, you wouldn't just start doing a project. So I would like to see the master plan included. And all my objections to these projects, the stairs, these other fences along Pacific. I have no idea what they're for, and I don't see any habitat restoration. Fairview Park Alliance would like to partner with the city in getting grants. We already applied for a grant to cover our own expenses. We're a local nonprofit.
And that is two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who do we have next?
Mr. Mayor, we have nobody else.
Oh, okay.
Here we go. We have one. Please.
Okay, Mr. Taboda.
Mr. Taboda, if you would unmute yourself, please, and then you may speak.
Okay, sorry. Ralph Taboda, I'm on a couple of committees, but I'm speaking for myself. And my comments are geared towards the capital process itself. And I'm not referring to any individual department or people, but on the Attachment One proposed projects for next year, it lists forty seven projects, estimated cost of twenty four and a half million. Attachment Three, ongoing projects, sixty eight projects, remaining funding thirty five million dollars. Of the sixty eight ongoing, thirty shows zero amount spent, zero dollars spent. And there may be a lot of good reasons for that, COVID being one major one. But my concern is if the council approves something close to Attachment One with the forty seven projects and the twenty four million dollars, those are going to get added to a workload that is already pretty heavy. And in particular, specifically, the thirty projects that where no money has been spent. So you got seventy seven projects, forty seven plus thirty, that are basically starting out on equal footing with zero money spent. And it seems to me that's a heavy, heavy workload. And to help deal with that, I would suggest between council and staff and maybe committees, you prioritize all of those projects. So there's not I guess, false expectations that something might get done before before it will be, because as as the city manager mentioned, some of these projects take a long time. Also, under energy and sustainability, there's project schedules for the following year, twenty two, twenty three. If some of those have a a a short payoff, high R O I, return on investment, it may make sense to pull some of those forward into this year and substitute out some of the projects listed for this year or next year out. If they have a good payoff, it makes sense to do those sooner than later. Thank you.
That's two minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. So do we have anyone else that wishes?
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Okay, then I'll I'll then close the public comments. And now it's time for the council to get an opportunity to get an opportunity to ask whatever questions they want or make whatever comments. And so it's pretty, it's a study session, so you could pretty much do whatever you want to do. And it's my only thing I will say is, let's go around and give everybody an opportunity to speak before anybody comes out and speaks again. So I see some hands raised. Let's go with Councilmember Chavez to start off, and then we'll go Councilmember Gamaros and then Mayor Protem Mar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gamaros actually had head up first, so I'll defer to him.
Well, what am I doing here then? Just go ahead. I don't care which one of you talks.
Let's go. It's okay, Manuel. Go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to make sure the order, but it's fine. So first of all, thank you everyone for joining us today on this study session. It's really exciting to see we're actually going to be doing things again after the rough year we were praying for last year. So thank you to staff for picking up this great list of things that are upcoming. I've had a few quick public comments, few comments, few questions, mainly comments. First of all, I'm really excited to see that we're finally going to open up Lions Park, God willing, this year. It's been a long time coming for West Side Costa Mesa and to see it finally completion is really, really cool and exciting. And then on to my next point, which is going to be access for green space in West Side Costa Mesa. So it's come to my attention that there's a couple empty lots in West Side Costa Mesa, particularly two that come into mind are 682 Wilson Street, which I mentioned before, it's that lot near Santa High School, and then 2037 Charles Street. I know we don't own these lots, but they're definitely empty and people always tend to bring them up when it comes to like looking for new park spaces. So I guess my first question to staff is, given that we have some, for lack of a better word, abandoned lots, what can we do as a city to be proactive and acquire these spaces to make more park space?
Maybe I should take that one.
Yeah, I can take that if that's okay.
Sure.
If you have a legal advice as well, that would be helpful. But typically, we need to start with, obviously, locations. But I think the biggest challenge for most cities when it comes to park acquisition is having the funding for it. And so what we plan to do is look at our park acquisition and development fees and funds, but then also looking at some of the ARP money that's come down the pike, specifically for infrastructure, and then also looking at the amounts that you authorized for us to use from the ARP funds in addition to what's in the economic relief plan proposed by President Biden, which has a lot of money for infrastructure, also looking within the allocation that we have, what we can use towards park acquisition. So you may recall that at the last meeting when we discussed the amounts that we would be getting in ARP, we specifically requested for you to make, for you to authorize for us to be made whole and to use the ARP funds for those amounts that we waived last year. And so when we went through the COVID crisis, and we're still going through it, obviously, but last year when we were really searching for a solution to cut the budget, we deferred some projects. And then we also, in addition to that, waived the CAM. And so at this point, we're in a position to have restored that value from last year, which allows us to have some unallocated funds at this time that we can use towards something like a lot purchase. And then, of course, there's always grant opportunities, but those are not quite as robust, they're more competitive. And so we're working with our lobbyists to put us in the most competitive footing that we can to acquire some of those grant funds. And actually, we were successful in getting a million dollars from, as you know, Assemblymember Cadi Petri Norris for the Lions Park Playground, which is outstanding. That was a replacement of playground equipment. And so sometimes there's a difference between the grant and how you can use it, whether it's for acquisition or for refurbishment. But we'll take anything we can get and we're going to continue working with all of our partners at every level of government as well.
Okay. Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to add, Kim?
Yes, just very quickly. In terms of, you know, the funding is always, of course, a huge issue. But if, let's assume for the sake of argument that we had the funding, there certainly is a process that we could use. We would always recommend trying to acquire property like, you know, abandoned parking lots through a negotiated purchase. But particularly for a high value use such as parks and recreation space, and particularly in areas of the city where, that are park poor, we could, if we had to use eminent domain for that purpose as well.
Okay. Well, hopefully you don't, you know, just take them with property. But duly noted.
No, no, it would be, it would always, either way, it's a purchase.
Mm hmm. Okay. Okay. My lack of domain may be showing here, but I guess the point I'm trying to make is, is when it comes to District Four in particular, and I'm sure I was expecting District Five and the general whole, you know, both of my parks in my district are pocket parks. They're both lots that used to belong to, you know, either in a park complex or Shalimar or a home for Ketchum Libel. So as we move forward with, with, you know, planning for the future, I just want to bring attention to the council and to city staff that when we're looking at a park port area like West Coast Mesa that's already kind of built out, the only way to really get more park space is to really create it or open up fields like Davis Hills. But, you know, my point stands, like, we got to be creative about like using what we can, we can find and make it into a resource for the community. And then alongside of that, two things I wanted to ask about. So I noticed that we're continuing two, I think, important items for West Coast Mesa, which is the Shalimar Park improvements and the skate park expansion. Was there a particular reason why those two projects were being continued to further or down the line, the CIP project?
So Councilmember Chavez, so right now we have money. So the ongoing projects list that we provided. So those funds are still there. Those projects are still active. We have monies left in them, in those projects. So we'll be working on community outreach and design in the next fiscal year for Shalimar as well as for Ketchum Libel projects. And then in the future year, we can, we can ask for funding, look for grant funds. And so it, they will be actively worked on in the next fiscal year, but it's not, the construction is outdated.
Oh, I understand. So essentially, what we're doing is, we're kind of preparing the groundwork by doing outreach. So they're not in the back burner, they're just being prepared for the next steps, right?
That's correct.
Awesome. Why?
Just to clarify, continuing appropriations is a government technical term that's used for appropriations in the CIP. So it's, all it means is that you have appropriations and projects that you approved before in the budget, and those are ongoing until they're completed. So we have to continue moving that appropriation. But it doesn't mean that the project is being pushed out, if you will. It just means the funding continues to the next year until you.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you for that clarification. That puts me a lot more at ease. And with that, Mr. Thromen, thank you for your presentation. I'm really excited to see us get to building Costa Mesa again.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stevens. And thank you, Rajah, and the rest of the staff for this presentation. It was very thorough and informative. I want to ask a question about the Costa Mesa Skate Park. You had brought that up. We already have a skate park. And I'm curious as to why we're building a second skate park, being that we already have one. And if we are going to build a second one, can the second one be inclusive for bikes and scooters? Because the one that we have now, if you go and bring a bicycle out there, you, you end up having a lot of problems. I don't know if it's a rule or an ordinance that we have in place that bikes and scooters aren't allowed, but everybody at the skate park will jump all over you and pretty much kick you out for riding a scooter in the skate park. And I never really understood what the deal was with that. But if we have plans or anything moving forward, I would like to be included on that. And I would like to see that if we do do this, that it's more than just a skate park, that it's inclusive for everyone who wants to recreate on a wheeled vehicle. So that's pretty much all I have. And thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Uh, yeah, so I can take over on the skate park conversation. So yeah, that was actually the intent. This is a conversation that's been had in Costa Mesa for a while, actually, about the fact that our skate park was actually a relatively advanced skate park according to some skaters and the fact that it doesn't have enough space for some of the other things that you mentioned. So rather than creating a whole new one, we've been talking about expanding the existing one because there's lots of space towards Junetro as you're like looking at T-Winkle Park. That was actually, that came up the other, the other day when Arbor Day was going to plant trees, right where we wanted to expand the skate park too. So I just want to clarify that this, this is specifically the design phase, correct? I think this is obviously multi-year, but the funding is allocated for 202122 is design.
So, yeah, Mayor Protem Mar and Councilmember Gamaros, just thank you for the comments. So the skate park, so there are two, two different ideas for skate park. One is definitely the expansion of the skate park we have, which is very popular, very crowded, and we want to make sure that we have ways to expand. And we have some concept plans that, that were sketched up. And we wanted to have community meetings and unfortunately, that didn't happen yet. But we are working on, so we're in a very early stage for that process too. And and that's, that's for expanding that skate park. And we also heard from the community and from council members about need for skate park in the west side also. So if there are opportunities to, to work out a skate park element as part of an existing park or as part of a future park, that's something that we want to explore. So, so, so there are two ideas that are being considered.
Thank you. That's helpful. And did we finish the elevator modernization?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem, yes. With that elevator modernization is, has been going on for a while. We have, we're working with the, the contract is awarded and they gave us plans, which is going through building plan check process. And, and it's actually under, in production right now.
Okay.
We think, we hope to get the work started actually in June, July timeframe. And it's a six month project. So they work on one elevator at a time.
Okay. Yeah, I heard some weird banging yesterday and all I can think of is like, I hope this isn't the new elevator. Oh, all right. That makes me feel a little bit better, I think. Good, we need to do that. The pie chart that you showed, I thought was really interesting because we're considering the energy and sustainability projects to just be like EV charging. But I wanted to ask specifically about the item 17, various facilities, HVAC replacement program. Are we, are we attempting to do anything more energy efficient, capture rebates or incentives, put higher efficiency units on? Because I generally call that an energy sustainability project in my world.
Yes, yes, Mayor Protem Mar. So these are a list of different locations where we have to replace HVAC units. So these are many small projects that are bundled together to achieve efficiencies also in terms of bidding and getting good, good price and a contract for that. So definitely we'll be looking for any energy efficiency upgrades on all of these units. And these are in many facilities throughout the city, like downtown tech center, City Hall, even Council Chamber. So many facilities are getting this upgrade.
Okay. Are we using the SoCalRen program for that?
So the SoCalRen program will be for, there are some other projects that we are pursuing at SoCalRen, which is the citywide HVAC retrofit project. So that's a much larger project we are going to work with SoCalRen on.
Okay.
And then we, you know, this recent, you know, the power outage that we had, we want, we are working with SoCalRen to isolate IT's power supply from the rest of the city power, City Hall power supply. So that way, that's more reliable. We need to ensure that the IT is functional and can be isolated. Right now, it's all part of one, one network. So.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I asked these questions and just something to keep in mind. I was just working with the city in Northern California. They're putting out a $17 million green bond and they're rolling their solar storage HVAC retrofit projects and EV charging projects and a bunch of other things into that. And putting it out like a bond, like anything else. And there's a definitive energy savings efficiency associated with all of those projects. And so I know we're doing everything sort of piecemeal and getting rebates and incentives where we could, but I would, I would be professionally remiss if I didn't bring up the idea of doing these as a bundle, the project. I'm glad to see the pool replastering is happening. I, I channeled my inner standing Guinness and pulled out my budget book from when I first got elected. And the pool replastering project was only 175K back then and has gotten $100,000 more expensive. I'm assuming that's because it's more damaged and labor costs have gone up.
So Mayor Protem Mar, when we had that budget, project in the actual budget and we went and received bids, it came in at $230,000 even back then. So we know that it's going to be more expensive. It's, it's a, it's a difficult project. So we are budgeting a little higher amount just, just to be on the, on the safe side. So.
Okay. No, that's fair. I assume there was a good reason that I felt compelled to ask. On the storm drain improvement, and I know we've talked about flooding on the west side, I think climate changes are exacerbating some of those things. Do we have any opportunities to employ any nature based solutions, put a bio soil in, capture some water instead of just routing it all to a storm drain?
Yes, Mayor Protem, that's actually an excellent point. So we are working on a storm drain master plan right now. So we have a consultant who is modeling this, the storm activity and the storm drain system in different parts of the city. And, and, and you know, we recently saw the results for West Side and it looks pretty good how they're modeling and how they're forecasting, how the storm drain system is working. And by doing that, we, the next phase is to identify different projects in these areas. And the money that you see in the budget is actually, that's also, we are building up money for future projects. And it'll cover many different types. You know, we definitely go with nature, like the Arlington Bioswale project, which, you know, also includes a bike trail. So that's definitely one way to do this. We look at stormwater capturing and storage and then releasing it when, when the demand goes down. So, so we're looking at different options for how we can improve our storm drain capacity, expanding the pipes and, but also building up storage and other, other solutions.
Yeah, very good. So for those of you in the public are curious what I'm talking about, so both the Arlington Bike Trail and then also actually underneath the park in front of the Light Prairie, and we've got several areas where we can capture water and put it sort of naturally back into the ground as opposed to just sending it straight to the ocean or having it washed down a sidewalk somewhere. So the more strategic we can be about sort of how we're percolating that water back into the ground, the better for all of us in the long run. On the Mesa Drive Bicycle Improvement Project, are we able to use the patch of dirt that's past the chain link fence? But, okay, that's going to be, I didn't know if we had right away.
So, so Mayor Protem Mar, yes, that's exactly the idea is to use that dirt area to create a bike trail on the north side of Mesa Drive. So we coordinated with Santa Ana Golf Course on that. So, so we have a conceptual plan and we will be working more with them in that project. And we want to take it forward further on Santa Ana Avenue itself and, and build a class two or class four bike facility along Santa Ana, west side of Santa Ana that by the golf course again. So we get a nice system of bike lanes and trails in the city.
Yeah. I mean, Mesa in particular, since it connects back to sort of the back way network and has no sidewalks really to speak of right now. So, okay, excellent. Good to hear about that project moving forward. And so I think the only, the couple of things that I want to add, as we're looking at EV charging stations, I would also include the golf course. And people are there for four-ish hours. So it's kind of a good place for turnover. And then we had also talked about looking in And, and then we had also talked about, um, looking in Mesa del Mar at sort of the Mission Valencia Mendoza area, whether there was an opportunity to add parking by making some of those streets one-way so we could do pull-in on either side. Um, and I know we had talked about just doing a preliminary design, spending time with the community, may, seeing if that made sense for people because it would be a pretty dramatic shift and take a, a two-way to a one-way. Um, but I, you know, if we can spare up, if we find a hundred K somewhere, it'd be nice to put that on the CIP list.
So Mayor Protammar, one of the projects you see on the list is Mesa del Mar improvements. So that includes that particular concept too.
Oh, wow. I didn't know we were going to squeeze that in there. Excellent. All right. I'm a happy camper then. Um, I think that was all of the comments I had for now. And I will just reiterate my, um, annoying, boring budget comment from earlier this year that I'm, I'm glad we're kind of focusing on, focusing on the basics, focusing on a couple of things that have been sitting around for a couple of years, finishing things from last year. And I appreciate Mr. Taboda's comment about this is a lot to do. And even with sort of a relatively trimmed down CIP, but, um, if Raj, if you think you can pull it off, there's no one else I would trust to do it. So, um, thanks to staff for your hard work on this. It's really good.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Let's hear from Councilmember Reynolds and then Councilmember Harper.
Thanks. I'm gonna try to continue the game of picking up where the last person left off. So, um, yes, I also agree, um, and, and want to thank Mr. Taboda for his comments on the, the prioritization. I'm, um, curious, uh, unless you have a short answer tonight, but just sort of learning what the anticipated schedule is for how you manage the, what is it, sixty-eight plus something projects? And, and, you know, how we continue the stuff that's, that's in process and, and what the order would be for, uh, the new items on this list. Um, and in addition to that, I'll, I'll, I'll mention something I've been talking about her, at least since I've been on the, the, um, I guess virtual dais here, on the physical dais too. You know, some way of communicating the status of projects. I know we've had an old online tool, but just, you know, it's sort of a, even if it's sort of a quarterly update. So that, when the residents get really excited that they see, you know, West Side Skate Park or Shalimar Park improvements, we know, okay, is that, has it been started yet? Or, or is it in contract phase? Or is it, you know, when is it anticipated to be, um, complete? Of course, with big caveats that anything can change anytime, as we've learned over the last couple of years. There was one other, oh, and the, uh, on the topic of the Mesa del Mar improvements was, um, the Arlington and Hunipuro intersection included in that as well?
Consulor Renals, it is.
It is. Okay, great. I got a question about that the other day from, um, the parents. Uh, okay, great. Um, good. Okay. Now I'll try to go back in, in order. Um, a few comments. I'll have a few questions too. Really excited to have an energy and sustainability sort of section of our budget now. And I agree with Mayor Protammar that I think there are a number of other things sort of littered throughout the budget that certainly could fall in, in here. One thing I was looking for was the tree planting program. And I, I didn't see that in the sustainability budget, but saw it, it show up later. I would love if we could to, I saw that the tree planting program didn't start until next year in the proposed five-year budget, and I would love to see if we could move that up. I know we have a, um, sort of stock of trees from these various agreements when people do remove trees. So I'd love to see if there's a way to move that up. Uh, I think it was our last meeting or, or two meetings ago that Councilmember Chavez also commented on the, the value and need for trees, especially in our walkable, um, uh, west side areas or any, really on any of our walking corridors. That was a theme in our pedestrian, um, walk audits as well. Um, really happy to see the fleet electrification. Uh, would love to see, uh, I know we approved a, a non-electric street sweeper at our last meeting, but I hope that every, every vehicle purchase that we do in the future goes through, you know, can we go electric here? Um, uh, I think that would be, I, I'm really happy to see that plan. Um, on the facility side, um, there's one project that we had in a budget a couple of years ago. Um, I think fell off due to COVID and I'd like to see it not necessarily this year or next year, but at least sort of back on the list for a future consideration. And that is, uh, uh, making valuable use of the, the old Costa Mesa courthouse. I can't remember what we call it now, but there are municipal facility across from Airplane Park. Um, we had, was it, was it West Side?
It's called West Side Substation. That's what we call it.
Thank you. Thank you. I couldn't remember. Okay, West Side Substation. Yeah. Um, we had brainstormed a while back a number of potential uses. And, um, it seems like it's in this sort of nexus of, of community resources. And I'd, I'd love, I think we had a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars as a feasibility study on, on ways to utilize that. Maybe we can brainstorm some ideas on that through the West Side restoration work. Um, parks, um, happy to see the open space master plan going to get done. Why do we need seventy-five thousand dollars to finish that?
Consulor Reynolds, uh, maybe, um, Mr. Mentor can chime in, but, um, let me start off. So the, the, we started working on the plan and we have a, a draft plan that, that you saw as a parks commissioner a little ago. And, and it's been three years approximately by, you know, now. And we want to upgrade the, the data that's in there. We want to do some new surveys also, and we want to re-engage the community also. We want to kind, we just don't want to bring the same plan to city council for approval. But we want to re-engage the community, get some more feedback. So it's just to, is to actually redo that plan a little bit more and bring it back to you. As, and maybe the parks commission too for one more round.
Uh, okay, that.
The, uh, the consultant is ready to go. You know, this would be the, the balance of the funding to basically relaunch. And there'd be some community input along with the, the census data from 2020. So, you know, it should be something that the consultant, consultant can turn around in three to four months, uh, once it's funded.
Got it. Okay. More data, more community outreach. You got my endorsement of that, uh, of that spending. I do, um, you know, I've been asking folks the, the, on this topic of, um, west side park development, which I, I really appreciate building some budget in for that because that's something that's, I just don't know how we saw. I, I, it's an important problem to solve for us and it's a very difficult one, right? Because land, um, finding land is a difficult thing. So, um, I, I, I think extending that question to the community and, and asking for ideas from the folks who live in the neighborhoods where there aren't large parks or, or accessible parks, um, I, I think it's a really good idea. So I'm glad that we're doing that. Just in general, uh, parks, you know, I think especially coming out of COVID and, and seeing how that impacted members of our community differently. I just think it's, it's a really important responsibility for us as city leaders to be, um, working towards making sure that all residents in our community have, have, you know, safe access to, um, um, high-quality parks in their neighborhood. So I, I'm, I'm glad to see this make it on the list. Uh, and I hope we can prioritize it and get really aggressive in our, in our grant pursuits on that. Um, I want to make sure, because the picture you showed on this topic of the West Side Park Development, I want to make sure we don't forget about the neighborhood that is between Harbor and the fifty-five. To me, that's one of the most challenging areas and that's, you know, people don't have, there's not even a school, uh, there. So, um, there's not even school park access and people have to get across Harbor Boulevard and they have to get across the fifty-five, um, to find a park. So I, I really want to find some, some solutions for that neighborhood. Okay. Uh, one other thing that, that has come up, um, a couple of times before, and I, I'm not quite sure how to solve the problem. And that's the, like, really low-budget park improvement. So, um, you know, we have parks that are in decent shape, um, but like simple, uh, activations. We've talked about frisbee golf. We've talked about, uh, uh, we had a, a whole troupe come in about pickleball courts and having some pickleball courts added. Um, I think we brainstormed before some like storytelling signage or just things to make parks a little bit more interesting. But these are items that don't quite meet the twenty-five K budget threshold. Do we have budget for that kind of park activation? Or where would that show up?
Well, I'll take that, um, right now, anything like that would be probably coming from either my contingency funds as city manager or any vacancy savings that we might have either in the Parks and Community Services budget or maybe in Raj's budget. But if there's an interest on the part of council to have a designated pot, if you will, then as Carol and I finalize, um, the operating figures this week, you know, we can take a look at opportunities for that either now or in the future with one-time funds or probably just some small investments, um, on this, especially on the storytelling side. Because that's a, that's a signage thing and I think that's something that we can easily weave in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'd like to, um, hear more about that. Maybe, um, I can poke around to see what other cities do. But I, I feel like we, when we do improve a playground, we wait till it's a, you know, a fifty K improvement and we have opportunities to make more frequent, you know, five and ten K improvements or even, even less than that. Um, that keeps sort of, uh, freshening our parks at a, at a higher frequency. Okay. Uh, I'll move over to, oh, I do want to, uh, comment just on the West Side Skate Park. I was glad to see that. That's certainly something to hear. Probably one of the most common sort of park goals um, from the West Side folks, um, totally agree on, on having an inclusive, um, facilities for bikes and scooters. Maybe we can officially have a, a scoot park next to a skate park or something like that. Uh, and, and I would, this is another one I think would be really interesting to solicit ideas from the community on for smaller scale facilities as well. So there's a name for it and, and I forget what it is, but instead of like a whole park having just, um, uh, little pop-ups in different places. So if you imagine along the Victoria Street Bike Trail, for example, there's a lot of space and we could have a few little, you know, offshoots that are these, um, pump tracks that, that can, you know, make a simple bike ride a little bit interesting. Um, I think those are, um, opportunities that would be good to pursue. And then I, I, I saw one community garden on there too. I think that's another, um, nice way to create some accessible, uh, green space for the community. Okay, thank you. Uh, on streets and ATP, thank you for all of those projects. Certainly this is the, the biggest part of our budget altogether. I'm really happy, uh, with, um, all the projects on the list. And, and I know we got some great input from the bike committee. It's really happy to see the, the crosswalks at Wilson, on Wilson and, and West Eighteenth. Those are two that, um, first came to my attention from community outreach. So, um, the process is working. Thank you. I just want to throw out there, I, I, I don't think that we can invest enough in sidewalks. Like over time, I'd like to see that budget increase. Really, you know, thinking about the, the walking with Jimmy and, and there was a discussion of someone who was in a wheelchair who, um, you know, has to move into the street on different, different segments. Um, I also don't think we can invest enough in our bus stops. We've got a, a lot of bus stops that, that, um, some that don't have benches and, and most I think that don't have covers. And I'd love to see us for, either pursue some grants or invest more in, in making a, um, sort of waiting for a bus a little bit more pleasant. But other than that, I am, um, excited about getting moving on, on that work. Um, and then the last comment I'll make, so I already mentioned the, the CIP tracker. Again, just having a way to communicate the status of these different projects, um, for the future. So once we're beyond the boring budget period, um, I'd really like to, to think about carving out a piece of our budget, um, as part of a participatory budgeting process. Um, our chief of staff, Alex Gonzalez, is, has been looking up some info on how other cities do some participatory budgeting. And sometimes it's as simple as, you know, we have a, a fifty thousand dollar project or a hundred thousand dollar sort of fund for, that we are going to let the public pick. And so members of the public, you know, sort of pitch ideas and then members of the public vote on those. And it, it, um, just some of the projects that we saw in, in other cities. I think Boston was, or Cambridge was a really interesting one. Um, it seems like a really nice process and, and another really direct way to, to hear from the community and engage the community in the process. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. Let's hear from, uh, Councilmember Harper.
So I'm just going to have questions and this is, uh, city budgeting one-on-one for me, so.
Yeah, sure. No problem. Just whatever you have.
Let me look at attachment one. How do I tell what the, 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 the starting target date is and the starting completion date? Is there someplace to go for that or is that something you have? That you guys have just?
Harper, we, we don't have a starting date on these projects at this point. The, of, the start is we can spend money after July one. That's the only start date that we know. But then each, each project follows a process. So again, we identify some priority on which ones to move forward first. And then, and then we have, uh, a team of staff members that take on different projects and, and, and we work on that. Just want to, want to point out one thing. This was brought up, brought up by Consulor Reynolds also and Mr. Taboda. The sixty-eight projects that you see from previous fiscal year, that's ongoing. Not all sixty-eight are going to be, just want to point out, majority of them are actually in good pace of completion. Some are already completed, but we cannot officially close it because we haven't come to city council for acceptance. An example is the bridge shelter. It's done, but we are finalizing the project with the contractor. We are finalizing invoices. So once it's complete, then we'll come to you for completion. Same thing with the Lions Park projects. So, so there are quite a few projects that are, that are done. And there would be maybe twenty projects that move forward into the next fiscal year. So it's not all sixty-eight that we will be working on.
Okay. So, so I'm going to go back to attachment one and, and thank you for that. And I understand what you're saying. So there is a beginning, end date. So these projects that I'm looking at, the twenty-four million dollars I'm looking at is just an allocation that we say, we want to do that project. And we don't necessarily, we'll, we won't necessarily spend that money in the one-year time, time frame, correct? It may be a year and a half. It may be two years. Is that correct?
Consulor Harper, that's correct.
That's the answer. And, and as far as funding, is funding like gathered in the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal period and then, and then locked up for these projects? Or is it kind of a fluid sort of thing?
Yes, Consulor Harper, the funding is locked. When you approve the budget on, in June, that's when it's, it's locked for these projects. If we have to change anything, we have to come back to city council again. We'll come back to get your approval to change anything.
But why locked? I mean, is that, are those, that, those dollars funded? Or do they, are they funded during that fiscal period?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll take a crack at that. Carol, you can jump in as well. And so it depends on the fund. So some of the, already have pretty large existing fund balances. And so we're spending that, that have been acquired over time. In the case of the general fund, usually that's based on what we anticipate the general fund will be for the upcoming year. So that's the capital improvement fund. So that one is a bit more real-time.
Yeah.
Whereas the others are more accumulation of funds or grants that we've received from other levels of government.
And, and I, yeah, I, I do actually, I figured this was fairly complicated, so almost afraid to ask that question. So, and, and I think this goes back to the comments about priority, which, which I, this is the thing I was struggling with the most was where do things fit into priority? And then what has funding and what doesn't have funding? When do you plan to start it? Those are all my questions that I know are really hard to answer. But I think all of us are looking at that going, where, what do we do first? What do we do second? Because I know you see something, um, Councilmember, uh, Reynolds and Andrew and Mayor Protammar love the sustainability stuff. I just want to sell decent people, so, uh, I'm making a joke. But, uh, so where's the priority and how this priority is defined is the question I have. You don't have to answer it, but that's, that's my biggest question. And I don't know how you get there because I'd love to see, you know, certain things we'd all love to see make sure to get done and we know their priorities, they have the biggest impact on the community. And that's my, that's my major portion of my comments, but I understand the mechanics, so.
Yes. In terms of priority, we also look at the safety aspect too. For example, the, the pool replastering. We want to get it done. So that's something that immediately it'll get done.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I understand. You, you really, really, what I think I'm looking for is a better format that shows me what you define as the priority. Because that's, as council, we should be able to say, you know, we don't want to plaster the pool. And you say, no, it's a safety issue and that can, I can respect that. But I think at this point, we've got a list of projects and, and it's a big deal. I mean, I, this is a phenomenal spreadsheet and I appreciate it. I don't mean to disparage it. It's just hard for me to give you any input about what the priority is. That's my point. So it's, it's got to, somewhere the format's got to get there where you can set some priorities. And maybe, maybe down that, maybe they're not one through, one through whatever this is. Maybe they're just priority As and Bs and Cs with no particular. Maybe they're just priority As and Bs and Cs with no particular, because things have to remain fluid. And then at some point, I think Councilmember Reynolds was mentioning the, on the website, to track what's getting done, what the priorities are. That'd be a really nice thing for the public, so. That's all. Thanks for that. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I can make something up, John, but.
Oh, no, don't, don't. I just want to make, I want to make sure.
Thank you.
So, okay, so let's hear from the sage of the East Side, Councilmember Harland.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. So I've got some specific questions and then some general observations. But first, I want to say how much I appreciate all the effort staff put in, all the different departments in putting this together, and especially Mr. Seth Raman. This is, again, a monumental undertaking, and I'm glad we're doing this now. And I'm especially pleased to see some of the projects that would obviously benefit District Six, but also I think have broader benefits for the city, such as the Mesa-Santa Ana Bicycle Improvements. There's been some issues with safety in that area, so I think that this might be a good opportunity to improve that circumstance, but also provide a real tangible benefit for our community from a biking and pedestrian perspective. So my two quick questions, one is for Chief Glass about the shooting range remodel. I was curious, is this typical for cities, or is there a regional facility that other departments use? What does that usually look like?
So every place is different. For us, we've had it since the building was built. It's been something we've had. There's a location, Westminster PD has a training facility, Orange County Sheriff's Department has a range that can be used. We do it sometimes use Rahagis up in, towards Prado and all those. It just depends if the organization has it or not for it. You know, the concerns that we have, discussed in the last couple of years, is, you know, it's overtime. You know, we don't have a local one. Now we have to plan and schedule people to go to these other locations. Generally, it's going to be on overtime, because it's not going to be while they're working, can't take them out of the field, or people are here now, or they could get qualified, keep up the regular training that we have, stay consistent without that burden.
Great. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then the second question I have, I think for Ms. Rosales. I appreciated more of the explanation about the traffic signal synchronization. I think there's some good detail about how it relates to bike and pet improvements as well. But I do want to be clear that the intent or the real objective from that project is to minimize stops and delays. It's really to kind of keep traffic flow moving, correct?
For the grant program, that is OCTA's, one of their major goals. However, there are other components that improve the timing for all users, such as the bicycle vehicle detection. What that does is it can identify the difference between a car and a vehicle. So when, I mean, a vehicle and a bicycle. So when a bicycle is detected, what it can do is extend the green time for the bicyclists to be able to get through the intersection. In addition to that, part of, we would look at pedestrian timings at every intersection. Make sure that they meet at least the minimum. There's new standards that typically happen every few years. Make sure they meet the minimums and look at locations where we would extend and have a longer walk time, in particular areas on West Nineteenth Street, for example. And then in our grant application, we did include audible pedestrian signal, or audible pedestrian push buttons at several locations as well.
Okay.
Congressman Harper, just to want to point out, while the goal is also to minimize, you know, stops, just want to point out when that happens, it is only when you travel at a certain speed. So the intersections are timed so that if you travel at a lower speed, you'll get your green signals. But if somebody speeds through an intersection, they'll hit a red at the next one. So in a way, it also tries to control the speed of the vehicles that go through the city also.
Right, okay. Well, so I just want to back up a bit and at least acknowledge that, you know, the budgeting process is, you know, how we memorialize our priorities. And when, probably aside from the general plan, this is the most important policy document that we have. And the CIP in particular, you know, is the most visible and the most tangible use of our scarce resources. And so when I see our budget right now for 47 projects, it looks like at least half is devoted to streets. And that may be perfectly fine. But I want to make sure, though, that that $12 million towards streets really ensures that we have great streets. And not just for vehicles, but for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so I'm pleased that, from what I've heard tonight, that there are a lot of the street-related improvements that do include and incorporate those elements. But I just want to make sure that we're not doing things that cross purposes. So, for example, if we're doing synchronization projects, that they are not going to complicate or interfere with areas where we're doing pedestrian improvements. So places where we want calm, we don't necessarily want the traffic to continuously flow. I don't know, having looked at the map, whether or not that's an actual conflict. I just want us to be, you know, mindful of that. Because if we're putting such great efforts towards our active transportation plan, and I'm especially pleased to see, you know, that investment that we're putting in this year. I think it's really important, and I know the community will ultimately benefit from it. But I want to make sure that it is part of, you know, a larger whole here, and that we are going to, you know, promote bike and ped and try and improve traffic flow. But we're going to have some conflict somewhere, and that may be okay. The other point I want to make about our CIP project is I want to make sure that our program uses all of the master planning that we've done. So we have a Parks Master Plan update going on. We've got, I think, Rajah, you just mentioned a storm drain master plan. It's going to be underway. We just finished our cultural arts master plan. We've got our active transportation plan. Our pedestrian master plan is in the works. All of this work that we've done to prioritize, and I think this is what Councilmember Harper was maybe referring to, is we should use those plans to inform our decision-making here. So some of that work may have already been done, where we've already prioritized. It's hard to tell from looking at a spreadsheet where you just have a title of a project and a dollar amount. But it seems like we do these individual efforts, and I want to make sure we capitalize on them. The last thing is I just want to make sure that we also align our project priorities with our council goals and objectives. You know, we went through this exercise as a council back in the beginning of the year. I checked again today to look at what those were and what our progress has been. And we do, you know, make specific reference to our pedestrian master plan, making investments in infrastructure. So I think it would be helpful for us not just to focus on the what here, not just the, you know, specific components of a project, but also to focus on the why. And by that, I mean, what are the benefits that we have in investing in these projects for our community? So they could be as simple as improving a bike connection to our broader network. It could be environmental benefits like storm water retention, or trees and shade, and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. You know, things that ultimately resonate with the community. And I think that's got to be part of how we explain what we decide for the community. So to that end, I would hope that when we put together spreadsheets, we can have some other kind of document that will include all of those benefits. So we can really focus on projects that maximize that value to the community. At least that's how I look at these projects, not just as individual ones, but, you know, how do they contribute to the larger whole? We're spending a ton of money here. I'm glad we are. I just want to make sure it's the most value investment for the community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful comments and questions. So thank you very much. So I have actually several comments and questions. So the good news is many of you have asked some of my questions. I've crossed them off the list. The bad news is many of you have inspired other ideas that I have. The first thing I want to say is to Rajah, Mr. Seth Raman in your department, you know, I was in my hometown over the weekend taking my mom out to lunch. And I was driving down our street, our main street, which is the equivalent in my hometown, it's called Las Tunas. It's the equivalent of Harbor Boulevard. And it struck me that the people in Costa Mesa in your department would not put up with the condition of that road in my hometown. And as we drive around these roads, and we drive smoothly, and we don't have cracks, and we take, I think we sometimes take the work that you do for granted. And I almost, when I got up the freeway, I almost pulled over safely so I could call you or text you, but I didn't want to bother you on the weekend. But I really appreciate the work that you do on those streets. And that having that such a high condition index is a real accomplishment. So here's to you and to your department, and to all the departments that make it happen. Okay, enough compliments. Regarding the shooting range, I have a couple of questions about this. And one is, kind of ties into what Councilmember Harper said. Chief, there's a place apparently in Westminster where we have been, that we've been using. And $1.5 million is a lot of money, and I think that it sounds like a reasonable and good expenditure that we've been looking at for a long time. Is there an opportunity for cost recovery by opening our shooting range up to other agencies so that we could, you know, benefit for that? Is that possible, or is that not feasible?
I would say the size of our department, I mean, there could be times, but the scheduling would be difficult. You know, we are a small, it's a four-lane range for in-house. The Westminster one is a full facility that they built with, you could drive vehicles in and do so. They've created a full-size shooting range. So there's a big difference in comparison. Ours is for simple qualifications, handguns, and so that DS and training scenarios. So it doesn't have the same capabilities as that. So it'd be very limited.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is one relating to timing, and it circles back to the draft One Metro West Development Agreement that we, I'm sure, have read leading up to the last meeting. And there's a line item in that development agreement for $2 million to be toward public safety, including the shooting range. And so if we do the shooting range in this fiscal year, then what would happen with, assuming that the money is paid pursuant to the development agreement? And there's a lot of, of course, obstacles that have to occur before that happens. Then what happens to that money? Maybe this is a Kim Barlow question. Does it just go into the general fund, or what?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that we would want to, to the extent that it's specifically designated for that use, that we should probably backfill or make provision in the agreement to backfill that money back to the general fund if it's paid before the development agreement, assuming it's approved and et cetera, payments would be made.
And Mr. Mayor, I can also provide some context. At the time that that development agreement was negotiated, essentially the wording was intended to provide some example projects that could be funded with the $2 million, but it was not specific to those projects.
Okay, so it could be, but it's earmarked as something pertaining to public safety, and that was, the shooting range was just illustrative, basically?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, got it.
We could, for example, use that money towards Fire Station Number Two or another public safety project.
Okay. And now I think, I think this next series of questions is in Mr. Minter's department. We haven't heard from him, I don't think. But we have heard from the council, and I do believe I agree with this. And I think that there's pretty much universal agreement that at least in certain parts of our, of our community, we don't have enough parks. We don't have enough open space, whereas, as the term is park poor. Getting back to my trip to my hometown, when I was growing up, we had two parks in our town. But we made very good use of our school facilities. So there are areas in the West Side of Costa Mesa in particular where there's large fields and school facilities. And what efforts are being made to activate those facilities to address the issue of open space and the park poor neighborhoods? And, you know, and can that, is that something that's being done? And what do you have to say about that?
I know I've been a part of discussions, I believe with the district officials, about trying to activate some of those. I don't know. I don't have a status update on the ones that I know were discussed, but I can come back to you with more information on that if you'd like.
Okay, so it sounds good. And then Councilmember Chavez had an interesting idea. There's some, apparently in his district, there's some empty lots. And he talked about, can we buy those empty lots? And this is maybe for Carol, I mean, Ms. Molina, or maybe the city manager. I've been reading a lot, especially recently, about community microbonds. And it seems to me like that would be like a perfect project for a community microbond. Let's assume, forget about eminent domain for a second. Let's assume we have a willing seller of a lot that we could turn into a park. And as I understand, the community microbond is, you can put it, you could put it out, and the community can buy in small increments bonds, and then you actually pay back community members at a rate. Is that something we've looked into at all? Do you think that that's feasible or something to consider to address this park acquisition issue?
Just to chime in, I haven't looked at those types of bonds, but I would probably prefer to look into the funding opportunities that the city has to purchase some of those empty lots turned into parking lots. As public property, as a city's property, we would also be required to maintain it. So it would make it a lot easier for the city to own those parks and continue the maintenance of that as well.
Right, the city would own the parks under this scenario. Like, for example, the city of Berkeley bought a fire station with a micro, sorry, not fire, fire engine with a microbond. And so anyway, I'll send you some information about that. This is a basic question. This is the capital improvement program, yet there's nothing in here about IT improvement. Why is that? Isn't that a capital? What counts as a capital improvement? Is it, is it an accounting issue, you know, amortization or whatever? What's a capital improvement as opposed to a non-capital improvement? And why isn't our IT infrastructure included in this program?
So Mayor Stevens, I just wanted to remind you, we do have the IT Replacement Fund that does address the IT strategic plan to maintain the city's technology infrastructure. We have separated that out. It's always been a separate fund from the capital fund versus the IT. And as a reminder, last year, we did reallocate 1.5% that used to be for the CAN for the IT Replacement Fund. And that fund is currently being funded with a 1.5%. And it's also being funded to use as the five-year IT strategic plan goes through, as was presented last year to the City Council.
Right. But why, I know that, but how come they're not, how come they're separate?
They have to be by governmental accounting standards, rules.
Okay.
Yeah, so for all governmental entities, we have to use the same exact categorization and criteria for how we identify an expenditure. And so for, in the capital program area, it is not technology. That is a separate designation. And so when you're talking about the CIP or Capital Improvement Program, those are different types of, those are more infrastructure. I don't know if you remember, back, probably in 2003, 2004, cities went through a massive fixed asset implementation program called GASB 34. Simply stated, what GASB 34 was, was this standardization across all levels of government about how you designate all of your fixed assets, facilities, and then your technology. And the CIP is meant to be specifically for hardcore infrastructure of the streets, storm drains. And those things, technology is separate and apart from that.
Okay, thanks. That's a very good and comprehensive answer to my. Okay. Thanks. That's a very good and comprehensive answer to my, precisely to my question. Okay. First, next, I have two more things, the second to the last one. It relates to the very first item on a line item. It says citywide community choice energy feasibility study. And it's got 150,000 coming out of the, uh, Capital Improvement Fund. So is that the CCE, uh, program that we were considering doing with Irvine?
Yes, Mr. Man, not this, that's the same program, but not with Irvine. It's to do our own feasibility study and community outreach.
Oh. To do what? To do our own, our own program?
For feasibility study for the, the, for the community choice synergy, going through a community outreach, uh, process. And we may identify other partners who may want to be with us on, in that.
And we would be the, the Irvine in this scenario?
So I think what we're hoping to do is to explore what other options remain. So as you know, we went through a lengthy process exploring the Irvine CCE, chose not to join that, CCE. And so this effort is a commitment that we made to council at that time, that we would pursue other options, whether it be joining with another existing CCE such as the Lancaster CCE or working with other cities, even within Orange County that have not joined Irvine or who have since opted out of the Irvine CCE. So for example, uh, Santa Ana has been considering the CCE. It's temporarily on hold, but we have a city managers working group that also involves the sustainability managers from four or five different cities. Uh, Lake Forest is currently undergoing a process to review it and may be interested in partnering. They're still going through that process. There's also Villa Park that's interested. And so there's, there are several cities that did not join the Irvine CCE but are interested in looking at the different alternatives, considering options and seeing if there's any way that, uh, they could join a CCE or create another one, et cetera. It'd be great to get feedback if that's something that you'd still like for us to pursue and consider. This is a follow-up to the conversations we had in the fall, leading up to the vote related to the Irvine CCE. And if it's no longer a council priority, then it's important for us to know that. But this is a commitment that we made at that time to continue to pursue this. And so it'd be great to hear some feedback on that.
Okay. Well, my feedback is I think, I talked to Mayor Khan about it over the weekend. It's still an opportunity to go in with Irvine. They're a little bit down the road. Now further than they were before. So I think we should revisit that. It's one person's opinion. And that 150,000 is a lot of money. You can buy a lot of frisbee golf and do all the good stuff that, that, uh, was identified by Councilmember Reynolds with $150,000. Just one person's opinion. And then the final thing I'll say is this, speaking of frisbee golf, speaking of golf, I've been saying this ever since 2017. I look at the, uh, uh, and by the way, I mean, no, I don't want to besmirch anybody. Everybody's doing great. But I look at this capital improvement budget and I've looked at it now for five years. I look out five years. I don't see anything about improving our golf course. Our, our golf course is a, um, and this is not a question, this is a comment. Our, our golf course is one of our only income-producing assets. It will produce more than what it usually produces this year, uh, $2.2 million to our budget. There are thousands of people that great, get great joy there. And the, um, the facilities there are crumbling. They're crumbling. They haven't been, tended to the, uh, the cafe, the bar, the, the, the upstairs area. Uh, it got a facelift, but it wasn't much of a facelift. And it, it should be a place, it's a beautiful place. It should be a place that every single per Costa Mesa, uh, resident who wants to get married, wants to have the reception there. And right now it's not. And it hasn't been. It's not about the, it's not about the, uh, pandemic. It, it's, it's a deteriorating facility. And so I, I'd at least like to see some, um, attention paid to that and to get that somewhere on the budget, somewhere on the radar screen. Everybody's working in very good faith. I love every single person working in all the different departments. It just always seems to me like the golf course kind of just falls in between the cracks.
It did not fall in between the cracks. So Rajah, do you want to be happy to know that, um, we did identify a funding source to start down a process for that, John? I didn't forget the golf course.
Well, I don't see it here. So.
Not in that, in that CIP part. It's in golf funds. So Rajah, did you want to share the concept on that? Have faith.
All right. I'm sorry.
Yes, Stevens. Yeah, there is a separate part of money for golf course, uh, CIP. So, uh, as when we get the revenues from them, we set aside a portion of the revenues for CIP. And when there are improvements made, actually the improvements that were made to the upstairs, we funded a lot of them using that CIP. So, so it gets, um, so they bill us for it and then we, we pay them for the improvements made. We come to an agreement on what should be city-funded and what should be their responsibility because some of the work, some of the maintenance and stuff is their responsibility as part of the lease. So, so we identify which ones is, is true CIP and qualifies as an expense from this account. But, but we have that, that funding. And down the road, again, we'll work with the, with the golf course operator and come up with a plan for improvements. And depending on what needs to be done, we'll see how much can be covered by these funds. And if, if additional funds are needed, we'll come to you back, uh, at, you know, when needed at a future fiscal year. So. But we have money to get started.
Thank you. Now that, that is actually, uh, uh, warms my heart a bit. I will just say one more thing about this. It, it is that I do appreciate that and I know that there's that fund and I've seen that before and I know that it was used in part to pay for the facelift to the banquet facilities. But, um, it, we need a lot more than that. And, and it's not enough. And I'm not a big, you know, run the city like a business guy. You'll never hear me say that unless the city basically owns a business, which is what we have there. We have an income-producing asset that needs some investment so that we can make more money and we can have, create more joy and opportunity for our residents to enjoy that asset. That's all I have to say, but there's other, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Mar, I think, and then Councilmember Chavez.
Yeah, you, you asked for feedback specifically on the CCA. I, I would like to continue to explore other options. My concerns with the governance structure of the, uh, one that was founded by Irvine remain and, um, have not gone away in the last couple of months. So, um, rather than look to join that, I'd like to explore other options.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Mayor Pro Tem literally stole the words out of my mouth. I was about to comment on their weighted vote system at any point and their two extra votes on their, on their council or on their little, uh, board. I will comment though, that because it's community choice energy and just like community, I would want more outreach as well to see which of our residents, um, will be willing to participate in the program. And more importantly, what particular facet they're looking to benefit from. Cause I know some folks can want lower rates, some may want more renewable energy. So I'm curious what the community input is for CCNEs.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody want to go again? Going, going, gone? All right. Thank you very much for everybody's participation, uh, council and staff. I think, I think we hit everybody on the call. Especially, um, the great Rajah Seth Raman, who I mean, tell you, you're on budget. You're on budget, you're on time. We're better than every city except for Irvine and in many other ways, we're better than Irvine and we all know that. So, uh, we'll see you next week on the, on May 18th. In the meantime, God bless you guys. Have a great week.